So you've got your packets. Can we get the approval of the May 12th council meetings? Chief Councilman. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Got a motion, Councilman Callers. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gunter. Any further discussion?
This is the motion for the agenda?
No, for the May 12th meeting minutes from last month.
Okay.
Yes. Any discussion? Any no discussion, can I get a vote? Councilman Fisher? Councilman Hill?
Prove.
Councilman Gunner?
Prove.
Councilman Callers?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda with, I have a couple of additions that I think we need is the addition of the Washington Wilkes-Black History Advisory Committee, naming the members of that tonight. I have a list of names that were the original founders and workers in this, I'd like to add those, and then Historic Preservation Commission replacing Alicia Fennell in that committee. Anything else y'all like to add?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also add to the agenda the funds to cover the three markers that are already in print.
Yes, okay. Yes, sir, definitely. Anything else? All right, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion by Councilman Callers, can I get a second?
Second.
Councilman Hill, Councilman Fisher, can I vote? Councilman Fisher, yes. Councilman Hill, yes. Councilman Gunner, yes. Councilman Callers, yes. Okay. All righty. So we got approval of the meeting agenda, so let's move into citizens' comments. I'll read the decorum real quick. The purpose of the rules of decorum is to foster an atmosphere of civil and courteous discourse, even and especially when discussing contentious topics at all meetings held by the City of Washington. A public comment should be as follows: Each speaker will be given three minutes during the public comment period. Each speaker will direct his or her comments to the mayor or presiding officer and not to any other individual present. Each speaker will refrain from personal attacks, foul, or abusive language, and maintain a civil and courteous manner and tone. Members of the audience will respect the rights of others and will not create noise or other disturbances that will disrupt or disturb the meeting. Any violations of the rules of decorum may result in the violator being removed from the premises. Dennis Quinn, here are our first topic.
Mayor and Council, my name again, Dennis Quinn, I want to address the renaming of the City Hall. Let me say it's done like this. I've been in Washington my whole life, I'm close to 70 years old. I've seen North Atlanta School be maintained, they were open. I've seen this be named after Mayor Pope. I don't have a problem with this stuff now. I've seen the private school maintained, I don't have a problem with that either. But I think to be inclusive, if this was in Washington, to be inclusive, that I think my side of town, the Black community, probably need a, to feel like they are part of, and so I mean, and I'm here just saying that, just trying to echo, I believe, what the comments, sentiments of our community. Why can't we name the City Hall after Willie Burn? And that is not taking away, because again, when we named the Pope's, first name, well the perfect building, right? So then later on, the council voter named it after Mayor Pope. I don't have a problem with it. I really don't have a problem, nothing happening. I'm just thinking about, if we're in Washington, I believe all y'all good Christian means, I believe that. Now why can't we look out for one Washington? I mean, make my side of town proud to be a Washington, Georgia person also. So again, I want y'all to consider, just again, rename the city, it won't take nothing from the community, I don't think it will. I think what it will do, it will enhance, from me living in Washington, we are a divided people, man, it is black and white all the time, black and white, why can't we just do something, try to, if that just try to bring us together? I mean, it won't break us there, but it can bring us closer together. I think y'all got the power to do that thing. Name that building, Willie Burn Municipal Building, to show that we did contribute in some kind of way. Now, I won't be a neck, fifth or sixth, y'all probably dead and gone, but guess what? If we name a building, then they will remember that we also contributed to the welfare of Washington, Georgia. I think it's all the same. I ain't, listen, I just think, if we fail, I mean, you know, again, because when the Pope building was named, I'm all for it, because Mayor Pope did a lot of great work. When the private school maintained, I'm all for it, because again, when the school over there, posts are maintained, I'm all for it. Again, now why can't we not just do one little name? One little name, that won't upset the whole wide world. Willie Burn Municipal Building, won't take from Washington at all. That my comment. Thank y'all good for me.
Thank you, thank you, Reverend. Ms. Fisher?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen. I wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about not-for-profit tax-exempt organizations. There are 63,025 active tax-exempt organizations in the state of Georgia. There are 60 of those registered in the City of Washington. I've talked to many people in the community, and it is felt that the city should not use public funds to fund charitable organizations. I would bring to your attention something that, after a little bit of research, the 4E youth organization was rendered exempt in April 7th of 2020. But they have, they are a private foundation, not a public foundation. There are several types of tax-exempt organizations, and they are a public charity, a private operating foundation, a private foundation, a group, or a lodge. And the 4E is a private foundation. Typically, for public charities, they receive a significant portion of their funding from public or government grants. Private foundations, however, have a single major source of funding, typically from a family or a corporation, such as the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And they often make grants to other charitable organizations rather than directly operating their program. Now, perhaps this was done in error, but they are registered in this state as a private foundation. I would just like the council to, you know, take deep consideration before we open up a huge rabbit hole with 60 nonprofits in the City of Washington. That gentleman is Pandora's box. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Reverend Anderson?
Mayor Bailey, council members, fellow citizens, good evening, and early happy Juneteenth, and early happy founders, 4th of July to each of you. In 2021, during the tenure of Mayor Bill DeGolian and City Manager Jerry DeBens, my wife and I, along with several other citizens, were invited to serve on the Washington Black History Advisory Committee. My wife could not accept the invitation because of other commitments, especially the Cherry Grove Schoolhouse Restoration and Rehabilitation Project. By the way, Mayor Bailey, we'd like to thank you, Councilman Hill, and so many others who came out on yesterday to celebrate the 5th anniversary of the placement of Cherry Grove Schoolhouse on the National Register of Historic Places. I accepted the invitation to be part of the Black History Advisory Committee from Mayor DeGolian with the view that we would be doing three things, and I'll only discuss one of them. First and foremost, I understood that my role as a Black History Advisory Committee member is to assist the City of Washington to prepare for the 250th anniversary celebration in 2026 of the signing of our nation's birth certificate, the Declaration of Independence. Black History Committee members concluded that since Black history is clearly American history, and that no additional space is available in our existing museum to place Black-oriented artifacts, and there is, in fact, a shortage of artifacts found in the Black community, it was appropriate to tour the City of Washington along with several other fellow citizens, both Black and white, and identify significant homes and businesses and sites and events in the predominantly Black community that are worthy of being memorialized on an information board or marker, so that the information could be digested by all passersby. The information boards or markers are to be an integral part of the Washington tourism industry. In April 2025, Information Board or Marker Number One, which is located near the clock on the downtown square, was a part of the tour of homes, and was a popular site to be visited by many who came into our town, and I did, in fact, see some of you there, and we thank you for visiting, and we pray that you also feel that it's worthy. The hardest work and heaviest lifting has already been done. On three separate occasions, our committee has toured the City of Washington with 91-year-old Washington native, Command Sergeant Major Ed Jenkins, and all or some of the following citizens. Skeet Willingham, local adept historian, Councilmen Callers, Hill, Anderson, Gunter, I'm sorry, Gunter, yes. A former council member, Charlie Wagner. Museum Director Stephanie Marchia. Photographer, videographer, Richard Crabbe, and others. And thank you, Mr. Crabbe, for the photos and articles you took as we toured on one occasion. Also, members of UCAP have been present with us on these tours, and of course, the former city manager and mayor, and other seasoned Black and white citizens. The Black History Advisory Committee has met many times over the last three years and have reached a consensus on more than enough historical information to be placed on each of the desired information boards and markers. Mr. Mayor and Council, we respectively request that the City of Washington appropriate the funds needed to complete and erect the remaining markers, the information markers and/or boards, and we further request that instructions be given to the appropriate people to procure them and install them at the earliest possible time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Reverend. Ms. Fanning?
I arise tonight as a resident of District 2. With all due respect, I must express that I do not feel represented by my current council members, particularly those elected to serve my district and the people who look like me. For the past several years, including under this administration, I have observed discussions, agenda topics, and final votes from my representatives. Time and again, I have noticed that the voices of many in our community, especially those who share my experience, have been left out. To the council members of District 2, I am your constituent, although I didn't vote for you. And as such, I request that my voice be heard, and the voices of others who share my concerns, be acknowledged and included in decisions that impact our lives. Most of you know that I'm not a stranger to you, so please feel free to contact me directly, just as I will reach out to you. We must do better together. I leave you with these words of Micah 6:18. He has shown you, oh mortal, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with God. Thank you for your time.
All right, so moving right along. No committee or board reports for this, that should be in your packet. If you have any questions, feel free to ask Will at this time, and then we can pass it on to the city attorney.
Before we do that, probably don't have any committee reports, various, why don't we help?
We have not received anything from, I didn't receive anything from WCCV, I have not received anything from the Fire Department or 911 as of this afternoon. We'll look into that tomorrow, make sure.
Also Sheriff Department.
Well, that's 911 in the Sheriff Department, yeah. We haven't received.
We never did get money about what they were going to use the money for. I hadn't heard anything.
Okay. City Attorney?
Mayor and Council, with us tonight is Mr. Jamie Garner. Mr. Garner represents a couple of housing authorities throughout Georgia that is asking us for approval of a finance procedure. Mr. Garner can speak to it better than I can, but I wanted to introduce him and explain that essentially, under the Georgia law, based on the finance terms that are being presented, this is an opportunity for the housing authority to get financing for their structures, their projects, what they're trying to do. Given the way that it's been structured, this would require the city council to approve it. You are one of several entities that are being asked for this approval. Mr. Garner will present and explain what we're doing and how we'll move forward, but I will suggest to you that it's rather routine. My other clients have been involved with these types of finance proposals before, but obviously, Mr. Garner can speak to it better than I can, and answer any questions you might have about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the owner of Autumn Lane and Brightwood Lane Apartments, both located here in town. Those two facilities, along with 11 others, are part of a mass financing being undertaken to, basically to upgrade those facilities, as well as the other 11 in the portfolio. There will be wholesale renovations, new appliances, new flooring, new cabinetry, everything within each of those units, as well as some upgrades at the facilities for the common areas as well, to the tune of about a $50,000 investment per unit in upgrades there. In order to be able to do that, the, there's one housing authority that's issuing the bonds that will finance this in part. It's a $30 million bond issue, being issued by the housing authority of Macon Bibb County. In order for them to do that and loan the proceeds to the various apartment complexes, as Mr. Nelson mentioned, we need approval of all of the local jurisdictions where those properties are located. That approval in no way involves any liability for the local jurisdiction, it is just a prerequisite to, one, allow those bonds to be issued so that the interest payable on them are not taxable to the buyers and holders of the bonds. And, two, it satisfies Georgia Housing Authority's law that requires approval for that Macon Bibb housing authority to actually operate over in the City of Washington. So that is what, that's what's on the agenda. With the tax-exempt component of that approval, it does require a public hearing, so we do need to open the floor to anybody else that might want to speak or address the project or the issuance of the bonds. And then, after that, put it to you guys to answer any, ask any questions or take a vote.
Doing this renovation, is this going to cost the tenants rent to go up?
No, sir. No, it will not affect anything regarding the property, the eligibility for residency there, any of the rental rates. It is all contemplated within the budget.
And you just need to prove from us for, just in case taxes and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir.
So it doesn't affect the resident later on down the road?
No, sir, it will not. And those, and the residents are, the contemplation of the renovations are that, so no residents are displaced, they might be relocated within the facility, but nobody will be moved out during that renovation.
Yeah, somebody had mentioned it to me, that was in the paper. I didn't know it was going to come up, so it was in the paper.
We did. That's a requirement of, that's a requirement that it has to be in the paper.
So how many, how many, how long does that run in the paper?
Just one week.
One week, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As it relates to the housing authority itself, what, at what time will the housing authority staff be engaged in this, or are they already engaged?
They actually, the local housing authority has no involvement whatsoever, other than they had to approve it as well. It is undertaken by the Macon Bibb housing authority, so outside of the jurisdiction, and then they are lending the proceeds to the owner of the facilities. So the local housing authority actually has no management, ownership, oversight, anything to do with the project.
But I know that our mayor makes appointments to the housing authority, and so I wanted to make sure to see if that will be coordinated between the mayor and the current housing authority, so making sure that that's in place.
And there's, yeah, there's nothing, nothing related to the housing authority, other than their approval was also required as part of this process, which they have already given. They've already met and adopted it, so.
And you said it'd be an upgrade of about $50,000 per unit?
Yes, sir. That's the rough budget.
Have that money already been allocated or resources revenue?
It is, this is part of the process. We need, we need that $30 million in bonds to be distributed, and then there's some other funds that are being put in, equity from the owners, as well as there's tax credits related to the renovations that are being sold and marketed.
Last question, so then everything goes smooth? Hoping everything, for everything goes smoothly?
That's the goal.
What projected date are you looking at to start? If everything, you know?
Yes, sir. We, this, we are securing the last of these approvals from you, as well as other jurisdictions around the state. We're trying to wrap that up this month, and we have a tentative closing date on the financing of July 15th. And then immediately, they will start construction, they're ready to go, I believe, I don't want to speak directly to the Washington, but I believe permits and all that process has been undertaken by the contractor to secure approval for the renovation work already in all the jurisdictions. So the, it should happen pretty quickly, right after that July 15th closing, once the funds are available.
Thank you.
Just one more question, do y'all, in the contract that tenants' rent will go up, that can be in the contract, or just begin this by word of mouth?
It is, it is not, I mean, there's nothing with the, with the residents there, but as far as assurances, I mean, it, obviously, the rent is regulated, so it can only go up so much.
Reason I'm saying that, because we had a apartment complex we had built, and tenants are moving out because the rent keep going up, so I'm looking out for that well-being as well.
Understand, I'm not aware of any intent to, again, I'm the lawyer, so I don't know the finance side definitely, but there's nothing that I'm aware of in the projected budget that would increase those rents.
So with this contract, who write, who write this contract up? The city wants to make sure that the tenants' rent will go up, could that be put in the contract?
It is, it is really an approval, it's not really a contract. You're granting approval, so I can't say that we could put anything in there, because you have no, I mean, the city has no involvement beyond the approval of the process, there's no further interaction of responsibility.
Right, we have an involvement, our tenants here, we have an involvement now with the rent, so that's the involvement I'm talking about. You're talking about, so we went down the floor before, and then that on rent, tenants. I'm looking out for that well-being, so.
That's all, that's all.
So, Mr. Mayor, you would need to open a public hearing, have received any comment, and then close the public hearing, and then you can discuss, based on, if there's questions that are coming up in the public hearing, or you have more questions, you can do that, but then you'll, we'll consider the resolution in your packet.
Okay. So can I have a republic meeting here now?
Yes, sir.
So we can open this up for a public hearing? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address any concerns or issues? Yes, Ms. Fanning?
If, I can answer Mr. Callers' question. There has been, I'm a, I am a commissioner on the housing authority, there has been no discussion in the year of 2025 about raising any tenants' rates at our units.
Well, we're not talking about the housing authority, we're talking about different units. See, we keep thinking it's the housing authority, but it's different, so.
It's private.
We're not talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I don't understand too much about bonds and things. My husband always handled that and just dumped it on me, and he expired. So when you're talking about re-renovating, is this going to cost the community, the City of Washington, or the citizens of Washington, any money at all?
Yeah, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, Aunty?
Hello, my name is Belinda, I'm a local resident here. I want to know, to clarify, why the $50,000 figure, is that per unit, or is that like per complex, like if they, is it a complex, or is it for every unit on the portfolio? And why $50,000? Because it's a lot of numbers, so if you're going to be put towards like renovations, they do, so new appliances, a key breakdown, why is it $50,000 figure?
That's just, that's, that number is just a rough estimate, but it is per unit, so yes, that, and that is the cost of those new appliances, to remodel, all new flooring, all new cabinetry in both the kitchens, bathrooms. It's, you know, I don't think this, either one of those facilities have been upgraded, at least in the last 25 years, so it is, it is a wholesale, renovation of each of the units, as well as the community facilities are all being upgraded. Everything will be energy efficient, appliances, lighting, all that kind of stuff.
What about the outside facade?
Do not know if there's direct facade improvements. There are, actually, both, there are playground, a new accessible playground, picnic areas, additional, one, Autumn Lane is having new laundry facilities, as well as the community building is being upgraded at Brightwood Lane. New roof, new surveillance cameras, resurfacing the parking lots, upgraded exterior lighting at both facilities. Yep, new siding, new siding, there is new facade, there's new siding going on both the buildings.
Will be a, be a public event, renovation event?
Certainly.
Mr. Quinn?
My question again, how long will it take, if we, if you all are removing people that are old, how long will they have to stay out of that?
That depends, the goal is to maintain a couple of units in each place, at each facility, where the residents can just relocate within the facility while their place is being renovated. If for some reason there's not enough availability, then they will, they will be provided housing elsewhere.
Can my person make sure they get somewhere to stay?
Nobody will be displaced, I can assure you of that.
Ms. Fanning?
I have a question for the procedure of this. You, Mayor, you announced that this was a public hearing, however, are there different parameters, because how many residents that this effect are here in this hearing? That's the issue with that. So we need to have, we need to redo this.
So just, just to speak, that, under state law, there's a requirement to hold a public hearing, and I think Mr. Garner indicated that their processes, they've put out the notices they're required to put out, given all, I have no reason to think they haven't. So as far as a public hearing goes, to the extent they're required to do it, it's just one step in a multi-step process that Mr. Garner's owners have already done. And if for some reason they haven't done it right, then it's Mr. Garner's owners that would bear the burden of not having done right, to the tune of a $30 billion, $30 million bond. So I have to assume that they're following the procedures, but if they don't, that has nothing to do with the City of Washington, it has everything to do with the owners.
The reason why I said it, because the mayor said it just before.
Well, yes, ma'am, it is a public hearing, the city has to do that. And then one thing I should say, and this is my apologies, Mr. Mayor and Council, in a public hearing, Mr. Garner's hearing has been very generous with the answers, we really should just be providing comment, and then at the end of it, Mr. Garner will respond to anybody at the council that wants to hear those answers. I'm not trying to shut it down, but I want to make sure we, a public hearing is not a town hall, so I just want to make sure we're consistent that way. But Mr. Garner's been very helpful explaining, and I certainly don't mean to stop that, I just want to make sure that state law is complied with.
Excuse me, sir.
Okay, one sec, go ahead.
Is that allocation of $50,000 to a new unit, is that including their cost to remove? And you said that it's going to provide, give the residents a place to stay, is that helping the those people that can't move, right, for themselves? Is that covering that cost also, is that, or is that a separate cost?
Everything is included. There will be no cost whatsoever to the.
That person moving cost is included in that $50,000 for that unit?
The relocation, yes. There's no expense whatsoever to the, to the residents.
And they're not going to be displaced or anything like that?
They will have a place to live, yes.
Sir, I don't fully understand the bonding or the bond issue, how that works, and also why it is Macon's Housing Authority that's doing this.
I'll try, I'll try, yeah, but Mr. Garner's the one who makes all the money, so I don't want to say he should be doing it, but my rudimentary understanding is that when, when entities want to go and try to. is that when, when entities want to go and try to get money, they have to put collateral, just like when you go to get a mortgage against your house. When, under Georgia law, housing authorities can actually join property together throughout the state of Georgia. And, and so you could be, have a property in Macon and have a property in Washington, and I'm assuming there are several more beyond just those two, probably throughout the state. They can put all that equity together, and then go to the bank, and they get a better rate, because they all join together. The housing authority of Macon's going to be responsible for distributing all that money. So basically, it's like, if me and you go together to our houses, we'll get a better loan for both of our houses. We let housing authorities do that, because we want to give them opportunities to provide housing to citizens. They won't do that for me and you, because it's just me and you living in our houses, right? So that's why it, it, it's odd that Macon's involved. But the reality is, they're, they're going to be responsible to make sure all that money gets spent back, and they're also the ones to get the money from the banks. The good news is, you get a lower rate for an initiative to make housing more affordable in our cities. So we get to join in and get the benefit, because I'm assuming Macon's got a lot more collateral than we do. So it's actually a benefit for us to be a little bit smaller. The good news is, Macon gets a little lower rate, too, on that financing.
Okay, and that's the bond issue?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the reason Macon is involved?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I think I said it right, and that's.
Yes, you did, you did.
Yeah, there's thirteen total properties listed in the, in our, in our area alone. Washington has two, Autumn Lane and Brightwood, and then Albert County has one, Crawford in Oakley County has one, and then Sandersville in Washington has one. And then it goes as far as Jasper, Pickens County, Sumter, Union, Calhoun, Walker, Clay. So it kind of covers a, a large area, a large path.
Yes, ma'am. And, and you were the only jurisdiction that has two facilities in, in the portfolio.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to go back to the question one of the attendees made earlier regarding the notice going out to those residents. Will there be another hearing? Because what I hear, it said that the people who are going to be impacted are not here tonight. And so we're, we're making a decision tonight without hearing from that group.
Let, let me clarify. The notice, the notice, the, there is no required notice to the, to the specific residents of the facilities. The notice is required to the public at large, and the public at large has an opportunity to come and address it. We ran a notice in the local paper of this hearing, actually about ten or twelve days in advance of the hearing. It was in the paper, not this past week, but the week before. And that, and that is the, that's the requirement under, this is a federal law, the hearing is required by federal law, not state law. So this is a federal law requirement.
My, my understanding on this is, it's just a basic, this part of it's just one step. It's many more steps to go, and it's, it's doing nothing but improving the, the residents' homes. You know, that's hadn't been done in twenty-five years. So I don't think one of them out there would have a problem with anything, and, and they're not going to be displaced, or, you know, out of their homes. So it's a win-win for everybody.
I think that's, that's a good summarization. It is, this is a prerequisite under the law that is required in order to include those facilities in, in the financing, and therefore do the renovations. Without the approval, and I'm not, this is not a threat, I'm just being real, without the approval, we cannot include the projects, and those residents do not get upgraded facilities. So this is just a legal prerequisite, which imparts no liability on the city of Washington, anybody else, except for the owner of the facility.
Okay. So any further concerns from citizens? Not all, close the public hearing?
I, I have one. I'm sorry. I just want to ask a question. I, I hear what you're saying, Councilman Gunnar, and I hear what you're saying. I'm sorry, I missed your name. Are, have you told them? Are they aware, the citizens that in Brightwood and Autumn Lane, do they actually know what's getting ready to take place with their apartments? So that way, they can prepare themselves?
My understanding is that the, the owners of the facilities have explained what is contemplated in the renovations, and shared the plans with them. And I, to my knowledge, there is nobody that is upset about getting a nicer place to live.
All right. All right. Close the public comment section. All right. Move back into Councilman. Council, you have any questions? Council, any questions?
No, go ahead. Go.
Yep, yep.
I'm going to motion.
All right. Got a motion by Councilman Culler.
Second?
Second by Councilman Hill. Any further discussion? Councilman Fisher?
Prove.
Councilman Hill?
Prove.
Councilman Gunnar?
Prove.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. So move right along. City Administrator?
One.
Okay. All right, moving into mayor discussion items. It is my pleasure to announce, to call to the podium Callie Chavez, National Imperial Miss Georgia Teen, 2017 Deb, Miss Wilkes County, and let her address. She did a wonderful job the other day, at the, the other morning at the power hour, and she is working on some new, I guess you'd call them, pageants. So she wanted to come speak to us, let us kind of know where she's going, what she's doing. You have the floor.
Thank you for that introduction. My name is Callie Chavez, and I'm proud to be the voice behind a mental health platform I held close to my heart, Balanced and Beautiful. I am your current National Imperial Miss Georgia Teen, and it is my mission to spread mental health awareness. I chose to spread this awareness through self-care education, because you cannot pour from an empty cup. In order to care for others, you must care for yourself first. This platform was born from my own journey, one filled with highs, lows, and the realization that it's okay not to be okay. Growing up, I often felt the pressure to be perfect, perfect grades, perfect sibling, perfect child, perfect everything. But behind the scenes, I was learning that real strength comes not from perfection, but from vulnerability, resilience, and self-love. Balanced and Beautiful is more than a platform. It's a mindset. It's a movement that encourages young people, especially teens, to find strength in their struggles, beauty in their imperfections, and balance in their lives. Mental health is not just a talking point. It's a daily reality for so many, and yet it is still misunderstood, dismissed, or silenced. This is why I use journaling as a core tool in my advocacy. Writing has helped me express what I couldn't always say out loud. Through my platform, I donate journals and host community workshops where we explore mental wellness, creativity, and connection. But Balanced and Beautiful is also about action. It's about showing care by listening, checking in, and creating self-safe spaces. It's about acting through service projects, awareness campaigns, and supporting local resources. And most of all, it's about leading by example. I share my own story, not because it's easy, but because someone out there might hear it and feel less alone. Our lives are so busy every day and full of stressful moments. Everyone faces stress at some point, and it's okay to take a step back and look for ways to help other, to take care of yourself. So if there's one message, message I want to leave with you, it's this. You don't have to be perfect to be powerful. You just have to be real.
Right.
And when you embrace that balance between strength and softness, ambition and rest, beauty and bravery, you become unstoppable. Together, let's build a world where being balanced and beautiful isn't the exception. It's the new standard. Please see me after this meeting today, so I can give you one of my self-care brochures and a mental health awareness pin. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, great job. And there, there are so many wonderful things happening in Washington with our teens and our youth, that we really just don't have the time to go over them all. But as her moving forward, and she's getting ready to go to a new pageant in Kentucky, I think it was, Kentucky?
Knoxville.
Huh?
Knoxville.
Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm sorry, Knoxville, Tennessee. So we want to cheer her on for that. Our AAU basketball team won their titles this past weekend. It's awesome. Those are youth that are playing basketball in our community. We've had several, we had Daylon Cobb returned this weekend with, and Justin Myers from Georgia Southern, that are doing us proud down there in Washington Wilkes. And they returned this weekend and had a summer camp for the, for the youth, anywhere from, I think, five years old to eighteen. And I think he had somewhere around twenty-five or thirty participants. I got to cook lunch for them. I can't say the lunch was good, but I got to cook lunch for them. So, so I, I kind of got dragged into that, which I, I thoroughly enjoyed. But there are so many great things going on in Washington, Georgia, with our youth. Our boxing club just had two, one gentleman won two belts, one young lady, seventeen-year-old, she won a belt, and they're both going to the Junior Olympics. We've got another kid that fought somebody that was two years older than him and twenty pounds heavier than him, and it was a draw. He didn't win, but it was a draw. So, so our boxing club's doing great, too. So Parks and Rec Summer Camp's going on right now. They've got a large amount of kids. Feel free to stop by one day and say hi to everybody. We're trying to do as much as we can there. Our splash pads are going great. We've had a little problem with Simpson's Liberty Street Pool with the splash pad, with some, some pressure lines that just weren't big enough for them to, to take care of. So we've redone those, and hopefully, everything's going to go great. Our swimming pool's going well. So there are a lot of good things happening in the community. I had the pleasure of attending Cherry Grove yesterday, their fifth reunion for their historic marker, and it was a wonderful presentation. I was, I was honored to be there. And I told Mr. Hanson, I said, the more I read about Cherry Grove and the things that are going on in our community, the more intriguing it is to read more. And Mr. Hanson was, was, who's kind of overseeing the area, along with Reverend Anderson, they presented a great show yesterday, great presentation yesterday, and it's very, very educational, and, and it needs to be taught. It needs to be learned. And I found out there's a junior American organization out of Oakley, or Hart County, that, and they're with the Daughters of the American Revolution, I think. That's who they're under? Yes, they are. And you don't have to be a, a, I guess, a family member of somebody that fought there to be a member of that. So I'd love to see something like that come to our city, too. So I talked to the young lady yesterday, and she's going to give me some information about that. So, so there are a lot of things going on. With that said, there are also a lot of things that are dividing us and, and causing diversity amongst us. I don't like that. I think we should be one, one group. I think we should work together to get things done, and I am all for helping any way I can. With that said, there was a ten thousand dollar donation that was withdrawn from the markers. I don't know who the donor is, don't need to know, but the money was asked to be withdrawn, and it was withdrawn. And when I asked Ms. Stephanie, who was, the Washington Wilkes Black History Advisory Committee was a standalone, not formulated, not formed committee. It was just kind of like a citizens' group. When I found out about the Black Historic Markers, I tried to find out who was the chairperson, who was the vice chair, all that. They couldn't tell me anything. As you said, Reverend Anderson was running, running the show. And so I went to him and, and asked, and he said, well, you know, we're just kind of a group that gets together, and we meet, and we talk, and we, we're, we're trying to build history. Well, I think that needs to be more a, a formed committee. So once, we'd actually started talking about it before this money was recalled. I was talking with Stephanie Machio, who is the Historic Properties Director, Will Long, our city administrator. We've been talking about it, that this committee needs to be formed and needs to be working more diligently, and they need the resources that they currently don't have. So I think, as mayor, I think that's a great thing that we need to do that. And I want to give them those resources. So that's why we sent the letter out. Unfortunately, I had to add in the bid about the ten thousand dollars. It did ruffle some feathers. There was some controversy about it, and I, I'm tempted to play some, some video, audio clips of, you know, we have to work together. That advisory committee, they're the ones that planned Juneteenth. They're the ones that set it up. We have to work with them. Boycotting the square, not showing up on, on the square, calling people names, that, that, that thing, those things can't be done. I, I, I don't, I draw the line. And I'm, I'm, I'm very serious with this. The city councilmen can pick on me all they want. That's what I get paid to do. That's why I'm here. And I'm going to get harassed and called names, and I've been called names and even been threatened a few times by citizens, which is, you know, what I, what I get paid to do. I stepped into this role, and I'll do this role. But I'm not going to let city councilmen talk bad about their constituents or the residents of this town. So just be aware that that should not happen. And we'll play a video or, or audio clip. This was before the money was?
Don't say that they don't stop you there. That's my problem. You have no blame here? Yeah. That's six to say, what happened? You want this happen this way? We got to stop this. It's got to stop, and it's got to stop now. You know what thing is going on? Juneteenth is a celebration of what? Black people being free. Celebration of black folks. But they want to have it on the square. I want y'all to walk out, not even go to the square, in front of Confederate statues, which they claimed that passed before. Who's been and got a count that we didn't own the square? What with you? You shouldn't go to Juneteenth on the square. Period. I'm not going. I'm not, I'm not going to support that. Councilman Hill's not going to support. You, you, you black people that keep hollering, we want to come together. If anybody go on the square, celebrate Juneteenth, you hang a head chief nigga, bottom line. You got to stand on your master knees to please him. It's not about that. Juneteenth's about celebration of, of what? Not pleasing your master by having it up on the square. So that's what it's, that's what it boils down to. You got a Confederate statue up there that just, city tried to say they didn't own, but they do own it, to take it down. Only time we want to come together, when I see something that we try to tackle together with black or white, like it or not, that's when you coming together. When you change the name of city hall to whatever, but, and vote for it, and stand on it, that's when we're coming together. You, you, you black people that keep hollering, we want to come together. If anybody go on the square, celebrate Juneteenth, you hang a head chief nigga, bottom line.
So comments like that on Facebook are, are definitely uncalled for, and I apologize to every citizen in the, in the city of Washington, Georgia, for a councilman that would talk like that and make those indecent remarks. I do apologize. But I want you to know that we are looking into having a Facebook and kind of a citywide policy, and I'm hoping that council will get on board when we have it, when we have it written up, to eliminate these type issues. Ladies and gentlemen, we, we have to work together. There's no way we can't. And I can tell you all right, right now, that I am more than willing to do what it takes to work together. I, I will, I will do it in a heartbeat. But once again, comments like those, that's what's dividing us. When I have employees that work for me or employees of the city say they're ashamed, that's embarrassing. That's bad. And I know not everybody's on Facebook, and I don't expect anybody to get on Facebook and go look, but there's a lot more on Facebook, and it, it makes the city look bad. So I would ask city council to not make comments like that on Facebook, because you're only hurting the city. You're only hurting your constituents. So moving forward, I, I'm going to need a motion for the foundation of the Washington Wilkes Black Historic Advisory Committee. No, sir. I, I'm doing, I'm doing a question right now.
No, no, I'm not asking a question about the comments. I posed the question to make the motion. So are you making a motion?
No, I'm asking for a motion, but let me read it first. Let me read it first, huh? Because it's not on your agenda. The formation of the Washington Wilkes Black History Advisory Committee, members to include Reverend Ed Anderson, Charles Jackson, Olivia Jackson, Loretta Fanning, Valente Fanning, Joanne Clark, Michael Hartman, Janelle Ashmore, and Ms. Maddie Carson. And I'd also like to ask Mr. Nathaniel Fanning if- to ask, uh, Mr. Nathaniel Fanning if he would be interested in being on it too. You would? Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept that, that and make those members on, on their own committee?
I'll make a motion.
David, thank you. You get a second?
Second.
Second, for Councilman Gunnar. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Collier.
We were supposed to be making a motion together, committed ten thousand dollars along with that. You first had to come and discuss with us about putting people on the board. You're doing things different, man, and like I said, I'm gonna call you out on whether you like it or not. Like, you just tried to call me out?
Yeah.
This is why we are divided. Now, the motion should come from a councilman, and Councilman Hill had it on his agenda. You're trying to make yourself look good?
Yeah.
Well, the best thing to do is to discuss stuff with your council members.
No, I, I...
Okay, keep doing what you're doing, you're the one-term mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Keep doing what you're doing.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna speak up and I'm gonna speak out.
In our meeting the other day, Councilman Hill asked on the phone, "Will it be on the agenda?" And I said, "Yes, I will make sure it's on the agenda." So it's on the agenda.
What I was, what I was speaking in reference to, Mr. Mayor, is that the funding for the Black History Advisory Committee to move forward with the markers, the three markers that, uh, have already, that are already in print, that's what I refer into. Uh, when you sent the letter out, um, I read it, I, I know that Reverend Anderson also read it, uh, in the meeting that was, uh, that was, had last Thursday, I think it was, and everybody's concerned, everybody wanna work together, but I think that for you at this point, to take the lead and make sure that those committees are in place without the, without the input of the council, this is mayor and council, and I, in no way am I disrespecting your, or not allowing your, um, acknowledging, excuse me, allowing, acknowledging your position, but this is the first that the council, as a council, is hearing of this, and I think it'd be to our advantage, Mr. Mayor, that you table this committee until we get more understanding of just where we're going. Now, what we normally have on committee, one of the reasons I ask that, what we normally have on committees is you have a District One representative and you have a District Two representative, and so we need to make sure that all those things are in place so that we can work together and support each other.
Those are on boards and authorities, that we have mostly District One and District Two. If you look at it, it's always boards and authorities, committees can be, we don't have anybody on U R A committee, we don't have anybody on some of the tree board committee, we don't have, uh, um, council representation on a lot of the committees. The boards and authorities, we have to have city council representative, but with the committees, we do not have to. I don't think a city councilman should be involved with this until they come to us requesting funds and money. That way, that way there's no, "Well, you can't vote because you're on that committee." So that eliminates that problem from there, so, and yes, the, the three additional markers, that is gonna be, uh, uh, in a different, because that has to come from Historic Properties, because this committee will not have any, any funds to do it, it'll have to come from Historic Properties.
Right.
So we're still gonna announce the, the markers, that, that's, that's going through.
That's a whole separate, I, I understand that.
Yeah, because it's Historic Properties, so...
I, I understand that. My point goes back to what Councilman Collier's and you alluded to in terms of this committee. Uh, this committee, or the adoption of a new committee, should be brought to the council for discussion, and here we are in a form of discussion, but this is the first that we've heard of it, and when, um, the conversation started after your letter, uh, to the commission or to the advisory board last week, we have not had a formal sit-down and discussion, especially amongst us as council members.
Well, this is a committee, this is a committee that's been technically meeting for three years, I think.
And I've been on that committee for the technically three-plus years.
Right, and, and, uh...
And I, and I know what you're...
Councilman Anderson, yes.
I, I, I heard you loud and clear, that we appreciate your work, we appreciate your support, um, none like Reverend Anderson, he actually poured his, um, whole time into this, and so I, I think at this point, Mr. Mayor, we do need to make sure that we're treading the right ground to set forth this committee. To my understanding, I'm asking them, asking our attorney for legal guidance on this motion.
Well, specifically, this, Section forty-one of the charter allows the mayor to appoint members, uh, standing or special committees, or committees of council. Um, the, the next portion of that provision also indicates that it would be with approval of the council. So I think, to your point, uh, Councilman, that is what the mayor is doing, he is placing up his suggestion, uh, for a committee and asking for approval from council. Now, whether or not there's been enough time to discuss it, that's amongst the members of the council to decide, but as far as your charter provisions go, the mayor takes the first step, you take the second, as council take the second step.
And what's the second step?
Approval by, approval by council.
Correct.
Right, which I think is what he's asking for.
My point is this, if Bill DeGolian last time put this committee together to go work with the, with the Historic Properties, what's the problem? All of a sudden now we gotta come up with another board?
There, it's the same board, they're, they've never been formally made a committee, that's what I'm saying.
They don't have to be made a committee if they're appointed to this board, they're on a board where you got a councilman from District One and District Two on, so why, why are we changing?
I, I think, Councilman, I'll speak for the mayor, the way it was described to me was that there was probably a problem in the past.
Like what?
This body, what the, what the mayor's proposing to happen now is what should've happened in the prior administration.
But what's the problem that happened in the past?
I don't think that, I don't...
If they discuss it, we'll, we would know.
I don't think the mayor, yeah, I, I don't think the mayor, uh, the previous committee was submitted by the mayor and approved by council, so I think that's what council, that's what Mayor Bailey is trying to do now.
Well, you should've came to council and discussed it with him.
That's, that's what we're doing now.
Too late to discuss it now 'cause you wanna vote on it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm still discussing it.
Go ahead.
This is something that the administrator should be orchestrating anyway, he's supposed to be the one running this city, not you. You chair meeting.
The administrator, the administrator cannot form a committee.
Administrator should be the one, so, excuse me?
The administrator cannot form a committee.
I didn't say he's going to form a committee, but he's supposed to do all the labor too and bring it back to the council.
He did, him and Ms. Machio did it.
Well, that's who should be discussing this, not you.
No, him and Ms. Machio did it, they wanted me to send the letter, I sent the letter. I signed my name on the letter, so...
Once again, Mayor, like I said, if you wanna, you should've, you're very disrespectful.
I don't see any disrespect there.
Yeah, you, you don't run things, Mayor, you chair meetings. Administrator should be bringing all this to us together at one time, a call, a meeting.
Anything else?
My last comment on this, Mr. Mayor, I see that the, um, tone is already set, and it seems as though you have your mind made up. I wish that this city would definitely take a look at how we're continually dividing our communities, and, um, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna end up good. It's not gonna end up good at all. So, uh, you, you have your thoughts behind doing it, I would ask you again, I would ask you as mayor and as a council member of this body, that we take more time to form this committee. I'm not against forming a committee, I'm, I'm against the process in which we are doing it. I have not had a chance to even mention this to my two colleagues, which we may disagree anyway, but conversation is the main piece. Let's look at each other and talk about it, but if you have made up and already gotten the votes, well then, let's, let's go for it.
Well, this is a committee that's been in action, they've just never been designated a committee, so how are you sitting on a committee that Bill DeGolian, past mayor, put together, when, and you've been on it for three years and not know that much about it?
I know everything about this committee, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's why we need to move forward, we need to formalize the committee so they can go.
We, every action we have taken, even with the first marker, even with the plans of the first markers, even with the location, the renderings of the first marker, even with the location of the markers, we came to this body and made a presentation, and this body gave us the approval, under your watch, under your watch, not former Mayor DeGolian, under your watch, we've been before, we presented two times, I know.
And I approved it, and I was all, all for it, and I still am, but at that time, I did not know that this was not a formal committee, this was just a group of citizens that were working under Historic Properties. This formalizes it to a committee. Now, they can take, they can do their vice chair, their chairperson, their secretary of treasurer, and they can start looking into grants and loans, anything that they would like to do, just like these other organizations, these committees can do.
Did you convey to them that's what, did you talk to that committee, ask them if they wanna form that?
I was at the meeting the other day, yes.
No, I, did you talk to them before you come to this body with this?
You, you're, you're missing the big picture here, they're already a committee, they're just not a formal committee, so in order to make them a formal committee, it has to come before us, we have to approve.
I, I understand, it's perfect, but you didn't answer my question, did you talk with that committee and said, "Look, guys, y'all wanna go this route"? Did you do that?
Not, not per se, but that's the only way they can do it.
Because, no, once again, oh, you're supposed to chair meetings, you're doing too much.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, Councilman Fisher? Councilman Hill?
No.
Councilman Gunnar?
Yes.
Councilman Collier, no. I will break that tie, yes, so motion passes. Now, we need a motion to, uh, attach the city administrator, ask the city administrator to investigate the budget, to find funds to pay for the next three Historic Markers, and move forward with that. Can I get a motion?
Mr.?
Is that, you, you wanna make, you can make it, you can go, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman Hill?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the past three years, the, um, advisory committee have been working up under Historic Properties, and we have identified, um, locations of markers, we have already sent to print one marker, which is located downtown on the square, and there's three other, um, markers that are currently, um, being evaluated and, and, and information of being sent over, uh, we have not gotten, I believe we have not gotten a proof yet as to how and what that's gonna look, and the information on the marker, but we know where they're gonna be, where they're gonna be located and so forth. So when you sent out, Mr. Mayor, the, um, letter that the person, anonymous donor, is withdrawing their support, that urges us as a council, urges me as a council member, that we, uh, the city should take up that entity. So I make the motion that the, um, city council, mayor and city council, um, revisit, amend the budget, ask our administrator to find the ten thousand dollars, um, roughly around ten thousand dollars, to make sure that those markers, and that money will be specifically for those three markers.
Second.
Got a motion, you got a second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Councilman Fisher?
Yeah. So since I'm, since I'm gonna be tasked with this, I just wanna, uh, I've mentioned that, I just wanna make sure, when you tasked me to find the money, are you giving me car collage to pull up from anywhere I need to pull?
Correct.
I'll make sure else is there.
That's from the form that we, that we are.
Councilman Hill?
It'll be stored.
I'm sorry?
I'll tell you, that's from the form that should be already.
Okay.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Councilman Gunnar?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, all right. We have one thing, Historic Preservation Commission has asked to replace Alicia Faneau with Sean Clippinger, I just need approval from the council for that.
Who is Sean?
Sean Clippinger, he owns the house at Poplar and Robert Tunes, uh...
West Eriehaw.
West Eriehaw, yeah, he, um, him and his wife, they run...
How many minorities on that board?
I couldn't, couldn't tell you, I don't know, off the top of my head.
Is there a reason that Dr. Faneau, uh, no longer?
She never made any of the meetings from what they told me, and that she was not willing to be on it, so...
Okay.
And they, they recommended Sean Clippinger, so...
But you don't know how many minorities on that board?
No, I, I don't, don't in front of me, no.
So, I'd like to table this till you find out, because we need to put a minority on this, that's what we need to do.
Okay, let's table it, okay, move to next one.
Is Reverend Anderson on, I'm sorry, may I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Is Reverend Anderson on that committee?
I don't.
Name, do you have a list of the committees on that committee?
I don't, I, I don't have it on me right now, so, you are on that board?
I am, yes.
Okay, all right, do you know, do you know how many?
Besides you, who else? I'm the only guy.
How many is on that board?
Total five.
Okay, so we can table that till next month, all right? Moving forward, Councilman Collier?
Uh, first, Mayor, I need to ask you about the Ethic Panel, how far we on that Ethic Panel?
Uh, we are...
'Cause I gave you a name, have the other one come forth and gave names, so we get this started?
Now, you're the, you're, you and me are the only ones that have names right now that I'm aware of, so, and we're waiting on, uh, the Ethics Panel, the final draw. Yeah, this mission, yeah. Yeah, we're just waiting on the rest of the committee members to give their names, so we can move forward.
Oh, while we add it, uh, Fisher, you don't have anybody to put on that board?
What's that?
The Ethic Panel Board, do you have anybody to suggest to put on?
Not at this time, no.
So, you know, along with you going through this, so why haven't y'all stepped up to the plate and added a name to the board? That's not, any reason?
No.
Gunnar?
Uh, I've got a couple different names, I just need to talk to them.
Mr. Hill?
Same thing with me, I have a couple people that we want to, uh, recommend, we've waited for, my piece was, I'm waiting for us to have, uh, equal representation on this board.
I understand, but, but like I said, we, we don't look good when you, it's supposed to be forming a, a board that we need in place. Uh, I'd like to ask the, uh, administrator, MEAG, how are we doing with MEAG, what's, how's everything flowing?
Uh, these, these items aren't on the agenda, so we didn't ask them to put them on.
But the administrator is on, as a topic, so, y'all, you rushing through, so I wanted to ask him that then, when you said he had a topic.
Okay, we should've stopped him.
Um, administrator, what's about MEAG, how's it going and are we in good standard?
So, yeah, currently, everything's rolling good with MEAG, we actually met, uh, we actually met last week, um, just for, they do a quick monthly check-in, so we had a little check-in, um, just kinda educated a little bit more on finding out the difference between, you know, transmission of power, generative power, and then also how, you know, the use of the transformers. So basically, what's going on with the state of Georgia, just to give everybody an idea of it, the state of Georgia as a whole, as a whole state, whether it's MEAG, whether it's Georgia Power, whether it's RALM, see, everyone's having a shortage of generative transformers, right? So, so there's, we're about two years out on getting multiple transformers, so no matter who you are and those kind of things, how big you are, it doesn't really matter, it's all about being able to get the equipment. And right now, that's the timeline they have, surely there's some out there, it's just how much money you willing to spend, right? So I'm, I'm, you know, that's just will speaking, they've said two years' time, so that's just kinda where we're at, we're just kinda trying to manipulate, or I shouldn't say manipulate, we're trying to work within, we're trying to work within the knowledge that they're telling us versus what we have available.
Okay, and my last question is, uh, I was over to the Book of Pooh, uh, how do they schedule someone to use that park, you know?
So, if you, so parks technically, most anybody can come to the park.
Correct.
Um, if it's a big event, you would wanna come to City Hall, talk to, uh, Brittany, get the, or actually you can get the forms from the ladies at the front desk, CSR desk, you can get the form there and get it filled out if you're having an event. If it's just your family, you know, little something, that's, that's not a big issue.
The reason I brought it up, because whoever had it last, there's a lot of trash out there, I picked that up myself personally, and that shouldn't happen.
I agree with that, and that's one of those things, you know, we, we as citizens have to take care of our things, and that's respecting one another, and that's part of, you know, picking up our trash, cleaning it behind ourselves. We do a pretty good job as a whole, as a city, of taking care of cleanliness and keeping things clean, but there's a few out there that disrespect, and sometimes they just don't know anybody, and so it's up to us as citizens to do that, to help them see the error in the ways there.
Okay, thank you, that's a, a place, a trash can out there by the basketball court, and also, uh, we definitely need to get some benches out there at Book of Park, I mean... some benches out there at Booker Park, I mean, it's five to one, at Simpson Park to Booker Park, we don't have a one bench, and that bench happened to be donated by a family, but the other, they put some for the basketball court, but we need some benches at Booker Park, more than two picnic benches, but we need some benches out there too. But my substance tonight is changing the name of City Hall to Willie Everburn Municipal Building. And I need to ask some discussion, to start with, when I brought up the last couple of times, folks said a person had to be dead and all this kind of stuff, I just want you to be real honest with yourselves. You don't know Willie Burns, or don't know former mayor, first black mayor, ask some questions, but I need to know from this council, each individual, so I ask you again, would you change the name? Well, do we have your vote in changing it to Willie Everburn Municipal Building? If we don't, tell me why. Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Mayor, we've already had this discussion, it was voted on, and the motion did not pass. It's behind us now, we need to move forward.
That's your answer?
That's my answer.
That's, that's why we're going to stay like we are, because number one, you got here to, you keeping us divided. May I interrupt you when you was talking, so please don't interrupt me.
Well, I want to ask you, I want to ask you a question, I want to ask you a question.
That's just, oh, you going to ask me a question?
Yes. Have, have you talked to Mr. Burns about this?
I sure have.
You did? What'd he say?
He'd be overwhelmed to have this name out there, why?
Because I spoke to him, I spoke to him Thursday morning, and I told him that we had voted on it once, and it did not pass, and he said, "Well, that's not my doing, I don't have anything to do with that."
He don't?
And I asked him, I said, "Would you be willing to accept maybe having the, the, what's it else? Annex, annex named after you, and him and his wife Barbara called me Thursday evening and said they would be honored to have an annex building named after them, if that would, would make a suitable substitute."
You know, that's a great idea, but did you come to me and call me and tell me that? So, you, what, what was this supposed to be?
I'm just, I, I, I figured he would have called and talked to you about it.
Let me tell you this, Mayor, we are never going to get together when y'all do what you're doing now, you try to. Play Facebook, I'm going to be on it tonight, and I'm going to discuss what's going on here tonight, and I'm not going to change that, period. And anybody goes to the square to celebrate June 2nd with that Confederate statue up there, you're wrong. So, I'm not going, I'm not going to hide and say, "You're wrong." So, anyway, moving forward, Mr. Hill?
Yes, I support renaming the City Hall after Willie Burns.
Mr. Gunnar?
My answer would definitely be no. City Hall is just City Hall, I don't think it needs to be changed. Like I said, we don't need to revisit this over and over, that was Macyo's last request, when we had an item come to the table, you know, that was his thing, I mean, that's, that was his last thing on the agenda, that he didn't get to bring forward.
Since you brought up Councilman Hornet, he voted for it to have it changed.
Well, he also voted if something died to let it be.
No, he didn't vote against, that's what he, and all the way he died, so that's what you're trying to say.
No, no, I'm just saying, we know he died, the sad thing is, that was his idea, was not bring things back up over and over and over, and waste these people's time and our people's time on something that has died. It, it died because it, it passed the vote, so move on.
No, I'm not going to move on because some woman put on the gym for next month too, because number one, I want to show how this town is not working together, because what's wrong with the name of that, just because it's black? Is that the problem?
Has nothing to do with black and white, you make it that way, but it's not.
Evidently it does, evidently it does.
Everything has to be black and white, and it's not.
What, evidently y'all making it black and white?
Y'all, who is y'all?
You!
Because I'm white?
You represent your constituency.
Councilman.
You represent your constituency, you have a constituency in District 2, I reckon y'all not representing, so what are you, what are you talking about? But that's, that's what I'm saying. You don't know what you're saying, but you want to come here and say, "I, I vote against it," but you can't give me a good reason. You don't want to vote against the man.
That was my reason, that was my reason, I don't have to give you anything, I don't owe you anything.
You don't have to give me anything.
I don't.
Not long as you got the votes, you got, you got that.
I have one vote.
Now, baby, go ahead, your point.
Like I said, I, I went to him and told him that it failed to pass, and asked him if anybody had approached him, and he said it wasn't his doing, and I asked him, "Would you be willing to, to have the annex named after you if that came up?" And he said yes, and I left it at that, that's all it is.
Okay, so out of respect, why didn't you call me and tell me you had talked to?
I did, yeah. Why do I have to call you to tell you?
But you want, but you want, you want to do everything else?
No, I just, I just, I went and asked him about it, so.
Okay.
So, yeah.
This is really ridiculous. Administrator, I'm fluting everybody. Do you have a problem with changing the name of City Hall?
I don't have a problem executing anything that's in the will of the people.
Thank you, appreciate it. But that said, I make a motion that we change City Hall to Willie Everburn Municipal Building. That's my motion.
A second?
Motion is second, any further discussion? Call for a vote, Councilman Fisher?
No.
Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Councilman Gunner?
No.
Yes.
Alright. The eyes on the table.
You voted against it.
I'm not voting, I'm not voting. Y'all can't come up with a decision, that's up to y'all.
That'll be on next month.
Councilman Hill, you wanted to talk about your Russell Street?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to the Russell Street, I know that we've been doing surveys or contacting the homeowners in that area, and trying to figure out, you know, which is the best way to go. I had the opportunity also to talk with the Jimmy Toto, and we had discussion on, you know, either or, how can we do it? It'll definitely make the community look better. I, I do want to add that that is one of the newest communities, housing community, in our city, and I think we need to continue to do what's necessary to keep it beautiful. And so, I wanted the city administrator to give us an update on where we are with that, I think it's been about ninety-plus days now, so I think that's been enough time, but please give me an update on where we are and what we're going to do.
So, update, out of the residents in the area, we had six respond. Six that responded, we had five of the property owners request the fence to be repaired, and then they would assume the fence at that point. That was what was passed along. The one property owner said wanted the fence removed. So, you had six people, five said they would love to have it repaired, and then they would assume the maintenance after that fact. Where I think, it's, it's a really hard situation here, because the fence, when it was put in place, from what I was told, was the fence was put in place, the funding went to the fence and became the property owner's fence at that point, that's what I was told.
Do we have that in writing?
Again, that's just what I was told. So, the fence is on each individual's property, and it stretches, and Councilman Hill and I went and looked, and there's some, the fence has been extended in areas, who did the extensions, we don't know, was it the city, was it the owner? There's a lot of gray area there. So, the question would become, who actually maintains the fence? Who owns the fence? That would be, this board would have to decide, as it grew, how you would like to move forward. I can make all the recommendations in the world about the fence, I think that we've had some, there's been people who've actually altered the fence, which we, we saw that, they actually sawed it with saws and cut holes in it to make driveways, which I understand, because a lot of people entered from the backside, I totally understand it, but then it becomes whose fence was it? If you felt, you're so inclined to cut your own fence, then it was your fence, obviously, right? So, there, that's where your, that's where the debate comes in, right? If it was standing in front of a jury, it'd be a pretty easy one to say, "You assumed it was yours because you cut it," or you damaged.
Somebody else's.
Public property. So, I, I don't think anybody wants to fight that back. So, so what I think, where I think we're at, is this board needs to decide how you want to move forward with the fence. The fence is your guys' decision, I will execute it however y'all want to do it, I will make it happen, so, you know, there's some things to think about. Funds, ongoing, how long, there's all kinds of intangibles, but it all depends on where y'all, first step that you make is the next step. Because there's going to be, there's some systemic things that will follow the decision you make.
Wasn't that fence put up with Barbara Bacon's group when that was done?
So, yeah, so that, that's part of the monies, there was, I don't.
It didn't cost the city?
Again, I, I don't know that, that's, that those, that was done, that funding, I don't know where that money came from.
So, I suggest that you get in touch with Barbara Bacon, give us some more information and bring it back, and we'll go from there.
Well, we tried, we did some meeting and, one meeting, and she wasn't able to make it, so that would be a thing that we probably need to try again, but in the meantime, it's continued to look very, very bad, that's one of the points that I want to make. You go out there now, from one side of the street to the other side of Russell, it really looks bad.
So, and I, I, I can attest to that, there's some areas that look really bad, and there's some areas that look good. The question, and I think this is something to think about, regardless of whichever way we go, if we decide to maintain the fence, or let's say, let's rephrase that, we decide to repair it and maintain it moving forward, you're talking about an expense that we got to talk about. It's not, we're not talking about a cheap fence, you're talking about, I mean, I've got the same fence in my house, and it was $25,000 to put the fence up, okay? And my fence is small, we're not talking about, this is a six-foot fence, so you might as well double it, and you're talking about five times the distance, so you're looking at somewhere in the easy 250K, if we redid it, so, and that's just rough estimates. So, if you think about that, if we went back a light kind, is it going to look, is it going to be seamless? Is the symmetry of fence A and fence B going to be the same? You know, so there's some, there's some things we need to think about, if we decide to do it, based on whatever y'all's decisions are, then we really need to talk about how it's going to be done, and so forth and so on. Or, it's the property owners, if it's the property owners, then we have no exception.
How many residents are out there?
How many what?
How many residents? Only seven, six responded?
Yeah, there's, what, how many Russell Street homes was, was built?
Yeah, it's on that side, because none of those go into the front driveway, they're all going to the back, and so, that's the only way that resident on that side have the driveway. So, we're talking about seven, seven houses.
Seven houses on that main street.
On that main street.
But then all the Russell, Russell Street houses, so, so nineteen, twenty homes?
Yeah.
And only six people responded? So, they, do they really care about a fence? I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, because it's a private, what it is, is a private fence, where, where I live, it's, my back door is that fence that we're talking about, it's a private fence, privacy.
Privacy fence.
Yes. So, we have about eight houses on White Hall, eight or nine houses on White Hall, because it goes all the way to.
Goes all the way to Hospital Drive.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it, and so there's another question, you know, once you cross, hi, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the street, once you cross, when you leave Russell Street, the street right there, adjacent?
Yes.
Once you cross it, is that fence part of it? Because there's more fence on the other side of the road.
Correct.
And I don't know if that was, I mean, we all went up there and looked at it, I, I have no idea where private fence and public fence, because it appears to be all private, but it's the same fence.
It's the same fence.
So, I don't know.
I think the key word would be private, because if it's a privacy fence.
Appears, but that doesn't.
You know, it's, it's private, so it's private, private, it's, I don't know.
It's a weird situation.
Well, what you've done is, you know, you don't have documentation where was given approval to put a fence up on someone's property, and that's what our city administrator had been trying, tasked to do, is finding out what the kind of plans, what kind of drawings, renders, and all that was done in the early stages, but none of that. And so, maybe Councilman Gunner would get set up again to meet with Barbara, but in the meantime, Ms. Bacon, in the meantime, that, something needed to be done, because some of the destruction came from the storm, some of those trees that fell from the storm, some of, not all of them.
Yeah, so my question would be then, and again, playing devil's advocate, if it was storm damage, and citizen A claimed the storm damage, was that a part of their claim?
I go, no.
You see what I'm saying? We're getting into some, it gets real, like, like who, because if, because here's the thing, if the city owns it, then the city should have claimed it, it did storm damage, right? But if, but if the citizen owns it, then the citizen would have assumed that role.
But I think, let me just discuss that, let the employee that took Barbara Bacon place, check the record, and let her talk to Barbara Bacon, find out what's going on about the fence, so it can be done with this.
Set up another meeting with Barbara.
Let, let her deal with it, and bring it back to the council.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Hill?
The last one, I think, where I am is the motion about the job training and job readiness initiative, Mr. Mayor. This body asked 4E to develop a training, job training, job readiness initiative, and we had a meeting with this city administrator a couple of weeks ago, and it was real good, that meeting turned out real good, the administrator made some recommendations, and I think that this body need to accept the recommendation from the administrator and move it forward. It's been six months now, and, and we keep, keep tagging along this organization, and so, Mr. Administrator, can you share with us your recommendation for that job readiness piece?
So, yeah, so I did, so yes, we met with the 4E organization. I got this paperwork yesterday about, I don't know what time it was, it came in on email. The, the meeting with 4E group, we talked about ways to change the wording, the way it was worded. N-KY left a really open gate for potential expenses, so I asked, "What is, what is this word, like, perfect example, perfect example?" I just was trying to be an advocate for her moving forward, if she's going to present this to a private body. A public body and a private body are going to be two entirely different conversations, and I expressed that in that meeting. The private bodies, and the first thing they're going to ask is program execution. Well, it sounds pretty upfront and clear what that is, right? But what does that mean to her, right? So, because she's the ones that are selling this, not me. So, if she's selling it, how is she going to sell that phrasing to you, the people, or to this board, right? So, we talked about that, we talked about mileage, if you notice, number changed significantly in mileage. You know, I did the math with her, I was like, you know, you're driving more miles than, than any entity around with that amount of miles you have, so we had to adjust that. So, those are just some things we went through. I haven't had a chance with her to go over this last proposal she sent in. So, again, my thoughts with her were going to be, you need to have a proposal that you can pitch to multiple entities, not just this one. It needs to be one that's palatable to any business around the city or around the state, because that's where she needs to be trying to get more and more funding to support the program. The program could be huge, I think the program is needed, I think that, that we need to be helping our youth see what real workforce training is, and that's not going and sitting in the air conditioner cushion job, that's not workforce training. Workforce training is learning about budgets, learning about words like N-KY, learning about things that, that other professionals in the area can teach, not just camp, or not just something of, of different age ranges. And that's what we talked about, we talked about moving the age range, we lowered it, because it wasn't to the twenties, but you had, you had teenagers and you had adults. Mixing teenagers and adults is a whole ball of wax that, that any private entity is not going to get involved in, and I can't imagine a municipality doing that as well. So, that was another change that was made, I did see that change, that's one of the first things, page one, actually. So, again, I haven't spoken to her about this proposal that she emailed. I put it in the package, because I thought y'all deserved to write and see it, so I was trying to get it to you as soon as I got it.
Well, well, again, my question is, again, we, we've been doing this for six months, and council, this is too long to strain along an organization who funding has already been included in the budget, and this organization has done what was asked by this council, now, I'm asking this council. Now, uh, I'm asking this council to let's move forward, uh, within the next six months of doing recommendation, and, and I applaud our administrator for making sure that, uh, the recommendations that he brought forth was amended, and I think that that's what happened. So, um, I think we need to move forward with that recommendation.
Can you clarify your motion there, Councilman Hill?
The city council had asked 4E, 4E to develop a work training, job initiative, and they'd done just what the council asked them to do and brought it back, and with recommendations from the administrator, I make the motion that we accept administrator, uh, recommendations to 4E and move forward with funding this organization.
Senator? Okay, got a motion and a second, my Councilman Colas. I have a discussion point. I'm kind of confused now. Ms. Fisher talked about public versus private, 501(c)(3), so that kind of caught me off guard a little bit. I didn't know.
I have the letter from the IRS, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
See the data that they gave you. Private Foundation.
For order, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're, we're talking about, this council has already asked this organization to move forward and to bring back an initiative. And I expect this body or these council members to do what they asked this organization to do.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna give them, provide them with, uh, computer labs, copier, fax machine phones, internet, classroom for workshops and training. Where are we going to provide them that at?
Up to, no, no, I don't think that's the goal. Up to the sixty thousand, up to the sixty thousand dollars.
It says equipment needed to provide the services.
So, also up to what we had approved was the sixty thousand dollars. So, anything goes over that, and as the administrator mentioned, the N-KID, so even when you tally the N-KID, if it goes past the sixty thousand, that's when you cut it off.
Any further discussion? Call for vote, Councilman, Councilman Hill?
Yes.
Councilman Gunnar?
No.
Councilman? All right. At this point in time, I can't, I cannot vote on this. I do not have enough information about the full background. And I, I think we had requested financials too, uh, to see if there was other monies coming in and other funds coming in, and I don't see that anywhere. Uh, it's kind of, if we step out on this limb without knowing the full background of the organization, of what, what her finances are coming in, um, I, I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting for it as of yet. So, I'll let her get back with city administrator, and she can bring it up next month. Okay, moving forward. Any further business?
Executive session for personnel.
Executive session for personnel issue, okay, all right. We will, can I get a motion? Second? Second, second, all right. All right, any further discussion? Let's go to the executive session.